Good morning. We'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting from Monday, December 5th, 2022, to order. At this time, we'd like for our county manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin, to provide the invocation.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners, and we welcome everyone who's with us today. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, we pray for the elected officials who lead in our community. Give to each one a renewed energy for their lives and for their tasks of leadership. As we enter the holiday season, we pray especially for all of those who are alone, ill, or going through times of stress or difficulty. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Please stand and join our Assistant County Manager Ben Warren as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, our Board of Commissioners are leaving the dais to come sit and reserve seating, and we're going to welcome the Honorable James Walter Bateman III, District Court Judge Presiding, who will administer the oath of office individually first to Michael Royce Bennett and then to Timothy B. Foster. Judge Bateman?
Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, Ms. Bennett. I state your name.
I, Michael Royce Bennett.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, Michael Royce Bennett.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
To the state of North Carolina
To the state of North Carolina.
To the county of Onslow and her citizens
To the county of Onslow and her citizens.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established
Which are or may be established
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support
And that I will endeavor to support
Maintain and defend
Maintain and defend
The Constitution of said state
Constitution of said state
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, Michael Royce Bennett.
Do further swear that I will well and truly
Do further swear that I will well and truly
Execute the duties of my office
Execute the duties of my office
As county commissioner
As county commissioner.
According to the best of my skill
According to the best of my skill
Ability
Ability
And judgment
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations, Royce.
At this time, Judge Bateman will swear in Timothy B. Foster.
Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Repeat this oath after me. I state your name.
I, Timothy B. Foster.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear
Do solemnly and sincerely swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, Timothy B. Foster.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
To the state of North Carolina
To the state of North Carolina.
To the county of Onslow and her citizens
To the county of Onslow and her citizens.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities
And to constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established for the government thereof
Which are or will be established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support
I will endeavor to support
Maintain
Maintain
And defend the Constitution of said state
And defend the Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with
Not inconsistent with
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, Timothy B. Foster.
Do further swear
Do further swear
That I will well and truly
I will well and truly
Execute the duties of my office
Execute the duties of my office
As county commissioner
As county commissioner.
According to the best of my skill
To according to the best of my skill
Ability
Ability
And judgment
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioners.
We now welcome the Honorable Robert Harding Gilmore, District Court Judge Presiding, who will administer the oath of office to Lisa Carpenter.
Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. I state your name.
I, Lisa Carpenter.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear
Do solemnly and sincerely swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, Lisa Carpenter.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
To the county of Onslow and her citizens.
To the county of Onslow and her citizens.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established
Which are or may be established
For the government thereof
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend
The Constitution of said state
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, Lisa Carpenter.
Do further swear
Do further swear
That I will well and truly execute
That I will well and truly execute
The duties of my office
The duties of my office
As county commissioner
As county commissioner.
According to the best of my skill, ability, and judgment.
According to the best of my skill, ability, and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Madam Commissioner.
Thank you.
At this time, Judge Bateman will deliver a charge to the Board of Commissioners.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Onslow County Board, I'm fortunate enough to have known each and every one of you before today. The one thing I know that you all have in common is that you have a heart for public service. That is a gift within itself. Each of you have been chosen by the people of this county based on your knowledge, based on your gifts, based on your special talent, and also that willingness to serve. This is a great and diverse county. You are a great and diverse group of people. My hope for you, on behalf of the citizens of this great county, is that you use each other's gifts as you work together to do what is in the best interest of this, our home, Onslow County. Thank you all for serving, and good luck to you.
The Board of Commissioners will be taking their seats at the dais in alphabetical order. Each year pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 153A-39, the Board of Commissioners, at the first regular meeting in December, shall choose one of its members as chairman for the ensuing year. The chairman serves as the presiding officer of the Board of Commissioners. Unless excused by rule of the Board, the presiding officer has the duty to vote on any question before the Board, but he has no right to break a tie vote in which he or she participated. At this time, I'm going to pass out ballots. We will be voting in writing, and each Commissioner is asked to sign their ballot. These will be available for public viewing at a later time. Congratulations. By unanimous vote, we have a new chairman, Chairman Tim Foster. If you would take your seat.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate the vote of the Board, as well as we continue to move forward. And this time, we'll move on toward the election of our vice chairman.
Congratulations, Commissioner Knapp. You are our new vice chairman.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Congratulations, Commissioner Knapp. At this time, we ask that all in attendance please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the agenda. At this time, we ask for an adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda has passed. Now, do any Board members want to remove any items from the consent agenda? And if an item is identified, no vote is necessary to move the item from the separate consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we turn it over to Ms. Griffin for if we have any public comment this morning.
Thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Yes, we do have four citizens who have signed up today to speak during our public comment period, and I would recommend or remind everyone that we do allow exactly five minutes for the public comment period, and speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up today. We do ask you to repeat your name and your address when you get to the mic, and we ask that you address the Board as a whole and not to any one Commissioner. We ask that you not have conversations with those in the crowd or pass off any of your time to anyone else. At this time, I will call Mr. John Dunn of 1261 Mount Pleasant, if you would come forward.
My name is John Dunn. I'm at 1261 Mount Pleasant Road in Swansboro. I had asked this question at the Swansboro Commissioners' meeting, but I really didn't get an answer. I wanted to know what the budget was for Swansboro last year and how much of an increase there was in the budget for 2022. What percentage it was?
Mr. Dunn, the Commissioners do not respond during public comment period. They respond during Commissioners' comments at the end of the meeting, but we do appreciate your question.
Well, we had a couple more, but we'll wait on that then. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Catherine Garlock of 905 Meadowbrook Road or Street.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Garlock. I live at 905 Meadowbrook South in Swansboro, North Carolina. Proud to be a North Carolinian. I'm here to talk about property taxes. Our property taxes this last year went up 37 percent, and even if only part of the county has been reassessed with that value. That's quite a chunk of change. And for our villages, which is where I live, that would be about $54,000 alone, let alone other parts of the county. My experience in the past is when the assessment goes up with your property value, that the tax rate would be readjusted so that it is not a burden to the property owner for that amount of money. For us, it was about $634. My question is, why was the property tax rate not readjusted in order to take the burden off the property owner? And my second question is, where is all this additional revenue going? Thank you so much for your time and attention. I look forward to your answers. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Garlock. Our next speaker is Mayor Jeff Wenzel of 315 Rosebud Lane.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Wenzel here, 315 Rosebud Lane in Holly Ridge. First of all, congratulations to those who were reelected and to Commissioner Carpenter. I do want to commend Commissioner Carpenter. Back when she was just Lisa Carpenter, a few months ago, had reached out to me and asked if she could have coffee with me to learn more about Holly Ridge and our growth and our challenges, and so I was glad to meet with her. And so thank you for being preemptive and reaching out and learning more about our great town. I just wanted to give you next four minutes and 29 seconds just some updates on Holly Ridge and some of the great things that are happening. It's been a couple months since the last time I was here to talk to you guys. The biggest thing is Camp Davis Industrial Park continues to grow. We are within weeks away of finishing the infrastructure for Phase Two. Our contractor is Military and Federal Construction Company, and right now, they are paving the roads and they're putting in the sides so that we will have the roads, and we will have shovel-ready sites within weeks. The deadline is January 1st, and so in January, we will have shovel-ready sites. We are very excited about that. And that is 60 acres, about 45 of that usable for industrial growth. One of the things that we did for the Town Council a couple months ago was to adopt an industrial park overlay district so that we can ensure that the right uses are being used for our industrial park. And so we wanted to protect that and make sure that true industry is what is being allowed into that, and so we don't have mixed use and don't run into issues with that. Continuing on, we have partnered with Onslow County Parks and Recs, and we are offering a location in Holly Ridge for a summer, or it's not a summer camp, a winter camp during the holiday season here. So we're very excited about offering that for the first time. So residents who are on our side of the county, the young kids have something to do over the Christmas break, and so that was exciting. And that is in part because this is our budget, first time this budget that we actually have a full-time Parks and Recs person. And so she's been very good at helping us continuing to move on, and so we're very excited about that. Another project that's getting close to completion is 224 RV lots being developed by Evolve, and it's right on Highway 50 behind Holland Shelter Creek Restaurant. A great partnership of being able to have a restaurant along with these 224 RV lots. They are very close to opening. Like all construction companies, they're always waiting on just a few components to be able to finish up, and so we're very excited. They have a nice clubhouse, an in-ground swimming pool. My personal favorite, they're going to have some pickleball courts, a dog park, and so we're very excited about the amenities that they're bringing to the town of Holly Ridge. We had initiated a rebranding committee, and they have finished their Phase One, which was to adopt a new seal for the town of Holly Ridge. Up until now, our motto had been "The Gateway to Topsail Island", and we felt that we have now grown into our own identity that we should have a motto that best represents the history of Camp Davis, our industry, and at the same time, are coastal. In fact, when I went and looked at Holly Ridge on Wikipedia, it wasn't even the gateway of the Topsail Island. Someone had listed the driveway to Topsail Island, and so I got that amended. But now, we can honor our true history and where we're going for Holly Ridge. I'm running out of time here, but we are in the process, working with Onwassa to have a 1.5 million gallon per day plant that is right now currently in the design and the permitting stage, and so we're excited about having that increased capacity for the growth in Holly Ridge. And finally, the town of Holly Ridge is working hard to solve problems that we have never had to solve before. And one thing that I want our council to continue to remember is, these are good problems to have. We are having to solve growth problems. We're not having to solve problems on what to do with vacant, empty buildings. And so thank you for your support, the Commissioners. I want to thank the Parks and Rec who are helping us as well, and so just thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Wenzel.
Thank you, Mayor Wenzel. Our final speaker for our public comment period today is Mr. Jason Dedman of 204 Everly Court.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jason Dedman. I live at 204 Everly Lane, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. I'm the Director of Elections, and I just want to acknowledge some people that helped with elections and also congratulate everyone that was elected and anyone that ran, because it takes a lot of courage, whether you win or not, just to put yourself out there for public office. So congratulations and good job, even if you didn't get elected, on putting yourself out there. We had five early voting sites. It takes a lot of time, effort, and energy to do the early voting, but a lot of people like to vote that way now. So I would like to thank the Director of the Library and also the Swansboro Library and the Sneed's Ferry Library. I would also like to thank the Onslow County Museum. There was a rich land site there. We also had the Board of Elections. That one's easy. That's what we do all the time. But a big shout out to the City of Jacksonville, because the most disturbed site actually is the Commons. That's the most popular site, and they have a lot of stuff going on there. So the City of Jacksonville is real cooperative with our department, and we appreciate that. Also want to give a shout out to Asset and Facility Maintenance. They pick up all of the cages and all of the equipment that helps us have an election. They drop it off before and they pick it up after. Information Technology Services with the county. Glenn and his crew do an excellent job helping us. The Sheriff's Department. So one of our sites is actually a school site now, a state-side elementary. They have a regular sheriff there on duty, but on Election Day, they also put an additional sheriff there due to abundance of caution so that no one can enter the school. They vote inside the art room. They vote inside the art room. They can't get, in order to get in the school, they would have to get past a sheriff. So, I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department for their help. And the Democracy Heroes. So, that's what they're called now. They used to be called Election Workers or Poll Workers. We're a department of five. There's only five of us. So, when we have an election, we grow to 300-plus people. So, without the Democracy Heroes, Election Workers, or Poll Workers, we would not be able to put on an election. And so, I would just like to thank everyone in the County of Onslow that's a registered voter that helps us put on an election. And if I forgot anybody, it's a little bit stressful when you get up here in front of everyone. So, if I forgot you and you helped me, I thank you as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dedman.
Thank you, Mr. Dedman. And that concludes today's public comment period.
At this time, we'll move on to our public officials and employee bonds, and that is Ms. Griffin.
Thank you Chairman Foster. North Carolina General Statute, Section 15929, requires an individual bond be set for certain elected and appointed officials. The Board of Commissioners is responsible for approval of public officials and employee bonds. Bonds are assigned to the positions that I will list now. County Manager, $200,000. Finance Officer, $1 million. Onslow County Sheriff, $25,000. Tax Administrator, $100,000. Deputy Tax Collector, $25,000. And Onslow County Register of Deeds, $50,000. At this time, I respectfully request approval of the public official and employee bonds for the positions and amounts that I just listed.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. No consent agenda items have been moved over, so we will turn it back over to Ms. Griffin for the managers' comments.
I just want to congratulate all of you and thank you for your commitment to public service and wish everyone a very Merry Christmas because this will be our last meeting for December. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
This time, we'd like to call Mr. Price, Mr. Mark Price, up and present him to the podium, Mr. Price.
On behalf of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners in Onslow County, for your unwavering support and unrelenting guidance that helped in leading our path to success, you're being honored with much appreciation and gratitude for your service 2016 to 2022, presented by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Price.
So, this morning, we will start with Commissioner comments with Mr. Walter Scott. Commissioner Scott?
Well, first of all, congratulations to the elected lead and the leadership. I'm here to support and willing to work with anyone. We've got a lot of work to do for the citizens of Onslow County, and I will not stay in the rear. I'm going to be up front, and we're going to work together to get what we need to do, what's best for our county. And I thank you all for allowing me to serve. Thank you and good afternoon.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your election and congratulations, Mr. Vice Chairman. I just, first of all, want to thank all of you, my family and team of supporters who came out to help me in the last election. I just truly appreciate all of your work and your support, and I appreciate your support for the next four years as we work hard to address issues in Onslow County. There are a lot of issues and, you know, where we always, we always are concerned about tax rates. We're a growing county, and there's a lot that needs to be done in Onslow County. And I hope we can accomplish a lot of those goals that we'll be setting in the next month or so. I want to thank the speakers who came to talk this morning. I hope we can address some of your issues. Thank the mayors. We have several mayors here. And also, Jason, thank you for your comments. And I think that's all I have. You know, have a good day. We hope to see you in the reception afterwards.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. First of all, I just have to say it is such an honor and a privilege to be sitting here before you. It's certainly different sitting up here looking out versus sitting out there looking in, and I'm excited about the journey that's ahead. I have to say thank you very much to my husband and my family, all sitting in the front row over there, for your support of me through a lot of months of things that were unusual at our houses. And thank you to all of the people sitting out there right now and those that aren't here with us right now today, but that supported me with incredible loyalty and hard work throughout the campaign season, both in the primary and the general election. They stood out in freezing cold weather and smiled and represented me in a way that I will always be grateful for. Thank you so much for that, all of you. I'm really looking forward to working with all of the Board up here. It's going to be a team effort to get the things accomplished here in the county that we want to get accomplished. I'm excited to hear what everyone is looking forward to working on and sharing the things that I have on my list of things as well. One thing you can count on me to do is to seek to please the Lord in everything that I do. He's the one that I use as my guiding light, and that's not going to waver one bit. The other thing that you can count on me to always do is to do what's right and to do what's best for the citizens of Onslow County because that's what drives me. So, I thank you for this opportunity to serve all of you and have a very, very Merry Christmas.
Mr. Buchanan?
How are you today? Congratulations, everybody, and thank the judges for being here and everybody for being in print. But I'm going to be one of those individuals, I have a question because I've had a lot of inquiries over the week, and this is business stuff I'm fixing to talk about. I want to know about the Stanadyne Grant that we didn't know anything about. Can you tell me, Ms. Griffin?
I was approached by the city manager, Josh Ray, and he asked if the county had any objection to the city sponsoring the Stanadyne Economic Development Grant through the Commerce Department. And I told him that it would be a win for the county and the city, that we have no ownership over it. But he asked, had we turned down the opportunity? And I did tell him that I was not made aware of the opportunity. And I reached out to Brett to verify that no one had asked him about it, and we did not receive any notification of it. But as long as Stanadyne is able to access the grant, hopefully, they'll be able to expand.
My understanding is that we have a Commissioner sitting up here that made mention to somebody that we weren't, we would knock this down, we would not approve it and use my name and Jack Bright's name not to approve this grant. We have always approved grants over the past, and we'll always do that. The key to this thing is, it's got to be communications. You have to have communications back and forth with the manager, and that means a whole lot to me, and you've heard me say it many, many times before. When we have somebody saying that somebody's going to knock this thing out, they're not going to approve it, that's wrong. And one Commissioner here should not be telling anybody that. But that's the information I received over the weekend. It's kind of disheartening when that happens to these Commissioners because there's five other Commissioners sitting up here right now with six of us now. But it's real important to have communications, and I've talked about that for years. But I want to thank everybody for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Mr. Vice Chairman Knapp?
Well, congratulations to Tim. Well deserved, and I want to thank the Board members for stepping out and voting for me as Vice Chairman. I just want to say a couple of things. First and foremost, Mark, it's been a pleasure serving with you. We came on at the same time. I've never met a, although we've disagreed several times in the past, but we've always decided to remain friends and we could discuss our issues. If you want to see a conservative individual, there's nobody more conservative than Mark Price. And I appreciate your mentor, your friendship. I wish you the very best. I know you're not done yet, but it's been a blessing to sit next to you, to joke with you, to make decisions together and discuss things. So, I'm really proud of your accomplishments, sir. The other thing, a lot of people, you know, there's speculation out there, and I just want to make something very clear. You know, we lost a valuable asset on this Board when Jack Bright stepped down, and I want to make sure that people are aware of that. He's one of the most experienced, polished individuals to ever grace this county as far as serving. Now, trust me, Jack and I have had some casual knock-down, drag-out disagreements about certain things and how we should approach it, and that's normal. You know, we're not robots where he hits my head and I agree with everything he says and vice versa. But Jack was a mentor. Jack was somebody who was steady on this Board, somebody who had, he's got a wealth of knowledge, and I applaud his decision completely. You know, Jack is undergoing some health issues. He just had a new grandbaby, and the stress was getting to Jack, to be honest with you. As Chairman, you'd be surprised how many phone calls you get, and as Vice Chairman, as as Commissioners, as we all do. But Jack was routinely getting 50 to 60 phone calls a day, and he had to rearrange his schedule to meet this or to go to that meeting. He was a man that was pulled in all different directions, and he's going to be sorely missed by myself and I'm sure the majority of the Board members here because whether you agreed with him or disagreed with him, he was always fair. He would always listen to you. He would never raise his temper. He may not agree with you, but he's going to tell you. And I'm going to just say that I applaud his service. I applaud Jack Bright for what he's done, and he's going to be missed by this Board. So, if you're listening, Jack, you know, enjoy your time with your grandbabies, get better, get your health on track because that's, in the long scheme of things, that's what's most important. The last thing I'm going to talk about is, for once, I pulled for UNC. And I even told Tim, and I called him when he was at that championship game, and once again, I was let down. You couldn't beat Clemson.
Me too.
I told Tim it was going to be a long drive home if they lose, and I think it was, was it three and a half hours?
We stayed the night.
But UNC's got a good bowl game. My Florida State Seminoles are going to be playing Oklahoma, so I'll be rooting for that. Somebody asked me before the meeting, I really love college football, there is no doubt. You come to my house on a Saturday, that's sanctuary. I'm watching all the games, don't even call me. I'm not going to answer a text. I'm not going to, I'm not going to respond. So, that's just the way I am. And then Sundays, it's worse because my wife is a Patriots fan, and I have to hear her banter about the Patriots. So, we are definitely a football team or a football family. But again, thank you guys for coming. This was special. Congratulations again to the newly reelected folks and to our new Commissioner, Lisa Carpenter. Welcome aboard, and I predict some successful things with this County Commissioners Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I too, congratulations to Royce Bennett, Commissioner Bennett, and Lisa Carpenter, Commissioner Carpenter, for coming aboard with the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Price, for your service to Onslow County. We appreciate what you have been a part of and what you've been doing. And also, heartfelt thoughts for Mr. Jack Bright. I appreciate everything that he has done. I've looked up to him for years, and then for the last four years, had the opportunity to serve with Mr. Bright, and my heartfelt prayers go out for him as he's moving forward with things that's going on in his life. I appreciate his guidance. I appreciate his mentorship. I appreciate his knowledge, what he brought to this Commission, what he's done for not only Onslow County, but also his service to Jacksonville Police Department and what he has done there. He has a heart for service, a heart for his community, a heart for this state, and we appreciate everything that he's done. And please keep him in your thoughts and prayers as you continue to move forward with what he, what he's talking, facing, and dealing with. At the same time, we appreciate the speakers that come up tonight or this morning. Mr. Dunn, I'm sure we can get in touch with you about the increase with our budget. I'm not sure about the Board there in Swansboro, but they should be able to answer that question. And Ms. Garlock, we appreciate you coming in and talking about property taxes there, and when the assessment values go up, that has a tendency, as should, the taxes are going to go up. But as a Board, we did lower the tax rate. We did not lower it to, as revenue neutral is what they would like to call it, because that creates other issues for us down the road. If we lowered it too much, too far, then we end up losing close to $2 million or more in sales tax revenue because that changes the formula. And then, we're going to have to figure out where we're going to come up with $2 million, or we're going to have to cut services to our citizens. And we have a high expectation of successful services here and things that we want, we want to get done. And some of the areas that that extra revenue did go to was, three cent is actually going to our fire services. We're using three cent of that to go support our volunteer fire departments. And as far as our municipalities are concerned, they are probably asking the question of, why am I paying three cents since I'm already paying for it inside these city limits or town limits? Well, the good news there is, that three cent that's coming from your citizens is going to go back to those municipalities for them to use it in a manner in which they see is necessary for their townships or their cities. So, that money goes back to them. And then, another portion, three cent of it, is going to school construction and helping support education in here. And then, the other 3%, I believe, is going to salaries and increase for our employees. So, not only can we recruit good employees, we're putting ourselves in the position to retain good employees. And right now, it's competitive out there, and we have to make sure we're able to recruit and retain and maintain the services and expectations for the citizens of Onslow County. Finally, I appreciate the support of the Board and the Chairman's vote. I look forward to working with this Board. We have a lot of things that we want to, we want to accomplish, and I would love to hear from them with what they have on their plates, that they would be interested in working and doing for Onslow County and putting us in the best track to be the best county in the state of North Carolina. And that includes work with our municipalities. We appreciate Mayor Wenzel coming in and sharing with us what's taking place down in Holly Ridge, no longer the gateway nor the driveway to Topsail Island. But Holly Ridge is a freestanding entity of its own and making a mark in Onslow County with what's taking place there, as well as our other municipalities coming down to Swansboro and Richlands and then the City of Jacksonville. We look forward to working with you because at the end of the day, if Onslow County is successful, our municipalities are successful. And if our municipalities are successful, Onslow County is successful, and that's what we want here in this wonderful county of ours. And at the same time, there's things that we want to be able to do. In order for us to do that, we're going to have to communicate better with everybody, and we're going to have to step up and have great conversation with everyone, including the Economic Development Group, Jacksonville Onslow Economic Development. If we want to do a good job there, then the lines of communication have got to open, and we've got to sit at the table with each other. Because if we want to be successful, the only way that's going to take place is talking to each other, communicating with each other, and putting something out there that's going to be in the best interest of over 200,000 citizens of the great county of Onslow. At this time, I appreciate you. I thank you, and look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.